Hey, silence my. Call to order this meeting Perry Township Board of Trustees December fourteenth, it's tape fourteen to thirteen. I put all the wrong dates on my checks this morning, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven o'clock PM. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty or justice for all.
This group will call the rules.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
I got the minutes for our Board of Trustees meeting for November ninth and the special board meeting for the twenty-third. Were there any revisions or corrections? And approval of bills being paid through the time period for October first through October thirty-first. Electronic warrants two thirty-six, twenty twenty-one through three eleven, twenty twenty-one, checks thirty-six, six thirty-three through thirty-six, seven oh nine. Just double checking, that is October, not November, correct?
Yes. Or no, it's November, sorry.
That is November. Okay.
Approval of bills is November.
So it's November bills?
Yes.
Okay, by consent agenda, we'll lump all that together.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Okay, fiscal officer reports.
Okay, so I have a couple items tonight. First one I want to go over is update on the Opers. Still working on getting everything corrected. Everything has been transferred over to Opers with the exception of employee twos. Twenty twenty-one is still pending because they were active in Opers previously prior to being switched over to Social Security. Opers has to go through a process of reactivating them on our account. Once they do that, I'll be able to get that in, but I don't foresee that's going to be a whole lot. There's only like three months that have pay periods that are affected in that. But I can let you know, employee one, for the twenty twenty contributions, those that have actually already been paid, those are ones that we passed resolution to do the appropriations to cover those costs in the special meeting. And then for twenty twenty-one, the employee contribution liability is going to be one thousand five eighty-five fifty. And the employer contribution liability is going to be two thousand two hundred nineteen dollars and seventy cents. We do not have the interest penalties yet because those were just processed the other day. They said it'll take a little bit for them to generate what the interest penalties are going to be. But for employee right now, total liability as of today is six thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and forty-seven cents. Employee number two, we have corrected the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty with employee contribution liability is three thousand one hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Interest on the employee contribution is three hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy cents. The employer contribution liability is four thousand three sixty-one forty-six. And the interest on the employer contribution is four hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty cents. As I said, the twenty twenty-one is still pending. So as of today, the liability on employee two is eight thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars and nine cents. Employee number three, total liability, or they were effective for twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. Employer contribution liability is three thousand one sixty-eight thirty-eight. Interest on the employee contribution is five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seven cents. Employer contribution liability is four thousand four thirty-five seventy-four. And interest on employer contribution is six fifty-six seventy for a total liability on employee number three of eight thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. So as of today, the total we're sitting at right now of liability for the township is twenty-three thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-five cents. Now, like I said, there is a couple of pending items, the interest on twenty twenty-one for employee one, and then the twenty twenty-one, all of that's still pending for employee number two. Any questions or anything on that? Any clarity?
Seems very clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. The next thing I have is, and the trustees all have a copy of this, is in the last meeting, I had brought up to you guys that Anthony Pranger, who is the traveling clerk with the UAN, I've worked with him off and on, I worked with him when I first took office, and I've worked with him at different times when I've contacted him through the UAN helpline. He has offered his services if we should choose so to get us through year end and the reorganization and getting everything set up for the beginning of next year. He's willing to do it in the same terms that he did last time, which is a pay rate of thirty dollars an hour. He and I discussed it, and we don't see that there would be a necessity of any more than maybe ten hours per month. And we would be looking at going from the middle of December, the fifteenth of December, through a possibility of going through February fifteenth, just to give us that ninety-day gearing up and going. And as I had said during the last meeting, if the trustees approve us using him as the assessment to help me through that, I would adjust my salary down for whatever the cost is for his services each month.
You had said you found somebody from another township?
I do, but there's a, they will help me here and there what they can, but there's a lot of stuff within the UAN because not all the townships use the UAN, and not all of them, like the one township that I'm working with, Clear Creek Township, they outsource a lot of their stuffs, like their payroll, they don't even do, it's all completely outsourced. So there's a lot of stuff that they can, can help me with, but there's also stuff that they can't help me with. And that's kind of where Tony would come in, and he's willing to help me too, you know, if it's during the hours that he's with the UAN, he can help me without billing it to the township.
And you're, you're happy with him?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know this was a bit of a frustration for him before, does he understand, I guess this is even kind of a question, with a few months of our accounting still not in your control and different agencies of different places having our financial documents, are we going to be able to close the year traditionally? Is he going to be able to work with that?
We should be fine at this point because we have, we've reconstituted the UAN system. That was the struggle was because when I came in, the last backup of the UAN was mid-February. I came in at the end of April. So what the problem we ran into was trying to reconstruct everything they had gone through the UAN system, out having the documentation to know exactly how it was processed.
And we will be okay to close the year?
Yes.
Accurately?
Yes. We, it's kind of different with the way it's set up, is we can close the year without really closing the year.
Okay.
An update just came down where I'll be able to actually work in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two at the same time while everything processes through.
Okay.
Because, you know, they, they know that you're going to have bills, like a lot of your December bills don't technically come due until January. So it's not like January thirty-first, you're done, no more, you know, that's why they have that option where you can work within both years at the same time.
Okay.
So do you need a motion on this?
I just.
I believe we had one in the last meeting.
We did.
Yeah, yeah, it was just, it was just preparing the contract for your review.
You need us to sign it.
Yeah, I'll need you guys to sign it, and then I will get it over to Mr. Pranger for his signature for him to get it back to me. The next thing I have is, I actually have two resolutions. Both of these resolutions are in relation to Shop With A Cop, which, you know, just happened this past weekend. One of them is Chief Littleton had asked about the possibility of moving some of the funds that were appropriated for his public relations account over into the Shop With A Cop to make sure we had enough funds and stuff there. So I have resolution twenty-one sixty-four, which is going to amend resolution twenty-one oh six and twenty-one sixty-two approving twenty twenty-one reallocation of appropriations. The Board of Trustees of Perry Township, Montgomery County, Ohio, met in regular session on the fourteenth day of December twenty twenty-one at seven PM at the township offices with the following members present, trustee Wen, trustee Hartshorn, and trustee Mears. Whereas supplemental funds received from the county should be post as gross and the fees are to be posted separately. And whereas the posting of these funds need to be adjusted and accounted for in the budget for November twenty twenty-one going forward. And whereas in accordance with ORC Transfer of Funds, the Perry Township Board of Trustees desire to make supplemental revenue and appropriation adjustments to the line items as listed below to cover those not approved in resolution for the original budget. Basically, it just shows that we're going to increase the appropriations in the police fund, and that's going to be distributed, well, actually, we're not increasing the appropriations, we're just reallocating. So you'll see there's zero change to the police fund, there's a twenty-five hundred dollar debit to fund two zero eight one two one zero five nine nine zero 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 with a credit of two thousand five hundred dollars to account two zero eight one two one zero five nine nine zero three one three.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one eighty-four moving, or sixty-four, moving the funds for Shop With A Cop. Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
And then the second resolution I have, resolution twenty-one sixty-five for supplemental appropriations. This one is giving me the ability to increase the appropriations in the police fund to account for the funds that were received through donations for the Shop With A Cop. The Board of Trustees of Perry Township, Montgomery County, Ohio, met in regular session on the fourteenth day of December two thousand twenty-one at seven PM at the township offices with the following members present, trustee Wen, trustee Hartshorn, and trustee Mears. Whereas supplemental funds received from the county should be post as gross and the fees are to be posted separately. And whereas the posting of these funds need to be adjusted and accounted for in the budget for the November, fix that one, because I'll have you guys say it, twenty twenty-one going forward. Whereas in accordance with ORC Transfer of Funds, the Perry Township Board of Trustees desire to make supplemental revenue and appropriation adjustments to line items as listed below to cover those not approved in resolution for the original budget. And it just shows that we did an increase, or doing an increase to the police fund in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and forty dollars to increase specifically line item or account code two zero eight one two one zero five nine nine zero three one three.
And the increase came from?
The contributions from different businesses and individuals to the Shop With A Cop.
I make a motion to accept resolution twenty-one sixty-five.
I'll second that.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
And then the only other thing I have tonight is, I just wanted to let you guys know that I will have additional hours here in the office throughout the, from now till the end of the year. I'm already in the office every Monday all day. I come in usually about seven o'clock. I will also be available all day on Thursday, November the thirty, or November, December the thirtieth, Friday, December the thirty-first, and Monday, January third. I do know that there's a possibility that we are going to need to have some additional meetings to discuss year end as well as reorganization. So if the trustees can get with me what their availability is as well, so we can kind of plan those out. And that, that's all I have.
Road and cemetery.
Cemetery. Funeral with a, with a dirt box on Sunday at Eversall at eleven o'clock. Sold four graves at Eversall this month. We've had three funerals this month totaling twenty-two this year. We've pulled and taken down the fence at Pleasant Hill. I put them on gov deals with the Reserve of five hundred, and they sold for four, four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, and I am waiting pickup. We meet with, we met with Patrick from Oasis. He put our website together, Karen, myself, and Dave Steck, we met with him. He's working on putting an intro together for getting our records onto a searchable database through our website. He was thinking he would give us a price based on each grave, and I'm really looking forward to that. That would be a big help, huge help for us. I'd like to get your guys' thoughts on putting up the rules sign in the cemetery, which I give all of you a picture, kind of what Butler Township does. You had to go through to get signs. This is a forty-two inches wide by seventy-two inches tall, so it's, it's a huge sign, but they have a lot of rules, so.
Where did they put that at, may I ask?
At the entrance.
Right at the entrance. You drive right into it.
Yeah. Something to discuss, because, I mean, we'd have to get some signs made, you'd have to go through our rules and kind of pick and choose off of theirs and put something up. I mean, I'm still getting calls, complaints. It's just, I mean, I know it's, it's tough. You, something hasn't been enforced forever, and now they are, and people are just, they're upset, and I understand that.
Yes.
But it's just, I want to try to get to the point where we completely mitigate that as much as possible. I mean, I know we could put signs up, and we can put them all over the place, and people still don't see them, but. So just some ideas, thoughts on that, maybe stew over those. I want to look into updating our flagpoles and putting lights on our flagpoles, especially Eversall and Pleasant Hill. I mean, our flagpole at Pyramid is very nice. It needs some lighting. There's, I don't know that we have any electric there at all, but we could probably look into doing some kind of solar on the top of it, where we, the company in Kettering that you guys had went through before.
Eversall we got electric, but the rest?
Right. Which might be tough to get it from the barn or to that, that building across the cemeteries, which I'm knowing.
Right.
Where we're going to dig next time at Eversall.
Want to check with Troop Forty-seven and see if any of the boys need an Eagle project or if there's any Girl Scouts around working on their gold, if they want to consider putting up flagpoles at the cemeteries as part of their projects. That might be something that they might be willing to do, and it wouldn't cost us anything.
I think Corey runs that. Do you know?
Yeah.
Just something to think about as well, and then doing chip seal on our driveways at Pleasant Hill and Pyramid. Pleasant Hill's pretty rough.
It is.
Yeah, that's going to have to happen at some point.
Yeah. I don't know if we start, I mean, I know we start to tear the archway down.
Yes.
At some point, we need to get bids on that, and then think about what we want to put back up, or if we want to put anything back up, or what, or, you know, moving forward, what we want to do, so we can start putting some kind of bits together and ideas and brainstorming, and, you know, it takes time. Our equipment, we have all of our trucks dressed for snow and ice, going through our plow blades on both the big trucks and the mold boards on both the bottom of the plows are rotting out and they're rusting through. We did some cutting and cleaning on them. I think coming out of winter, we will need to get the yellow truck blade looked at, fixed, and just, just up to standards. There's holes in the bottom of it on certain sections that you can fit a softball through. So we should look into getting that fixed coming out of winter. The yellow dump truck down in the corners on the inside the bed, they're curved steel, the whole front, there's two feet of the front of that, that's completely rotted out, still got salt in it. We dug all that out, cleaned it all out, sprayed it all out. So I'm currently looking into getting some steel from Allen Chambers up at, they're still coming, talking to him. I got to work on that, but we've gone through the augers and the motor on the salt spreaders. We replaced a bearing, drive chain on the yellow truck. We need to replace the drive motor on the red truck salt spreader, but I feel overall we're ready for snow, wind, and if it comes. I'm still looking for the replacement on the red dump truck. We're going through the trap trap shop trying to rearrange and clean out what we think we do not need. We sold the homemade red trailer on gov deals for four hundred and eighty bucks. Just listed the nineteen sixty-five SRAM air compressor on gov deals as well. We just got all the weed eaters running, and I'm going to start listing them, all of our old weed eaters, we're going to list them as well. For our roads, we went through all of our Pyramid alleys and trimmed back, cut back all the overgrowth, cleaned up anything that's related to chainsaws or trimmers. We've got it all cleaned, and they're ready for, to be plowed. We have been going through trimming trees, cleaning up the weeds and brush around our poles, bridges, and culverts. We're continuing to check our roads for potholes and patching when needed. We're going to start putting stone in our low areas along our roadways. I want to thank Doug from Kramer Kramer. He and I spent a bunch of time going over our application for our ODOT grant. Through a lot of talking and dead ends, we came to the conclusion to apply for the roads resurfacing was our best option. We applied for the section on Ambidire Road, a half mile west and east of Clayton Road. We have a great deal of cracking and potholes through that area. We're awaiting an answer back around the date of February twenty-eighth. We applied for the full grant, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which should get us right at a, close to a mile of resurfaced roads. So hopefully we get that. Another question was, do we have any company that we specialize in putting grants together for our township?
And writing the grants?
Writing the grants, or even looking for them to try to get us.
So Kramer and Kramer does the state-based, federal-based ones.
Which you.
They put them together, and they, they don't get anything unless we win, right? If we win something like the OPWC, yeah. So the OPWC was one that just came through, and there's going to be word on that shortly.
Yeah.
But they did the whole package on that and then submitted it, and then defended it in front of the OPWC board and gave all the details necessary for any value ways to be made. So that's who we use if we want to broaden the types of grants we go after. I think that's a conversation with Kramer and Kramer, because I think the agreement that we have with them is broad enough that we didn't list like what kind of grants or what kind of improvements they would go after. I think we just have to open the aperture on that a little bit. So we can have a conversation with them, and if you want to talk with Doug and see what they think, and then bring it back to us, and, and he was.
They're all for it, they'll put it together.
I mean, he, we applied for it, and he worked on it. They're way busy as well.
Yeah.
Lots of time, after hours, just calling back and forth, get this information, can I get this? And he, I mean, he stuck his neck out for us tremendously, I feel like. He's very, very nice to work with and a lot of information.
Yeah.
Tons of information is very helpful, but I just, you know, but we got it, we got applied for, so hopefully here something back. And then we're going to start going through the tool and story and start getting that all cleaned up and put back together through the winter months. Also, I don't need a resolution, right? Just, just the motion to move Dave Steffi from full-time to part-time. And that was actually effective on November second when Dave Steck started, right? We just didn't.
Is that the same rate?
Guess so.
But I'll make a motion to accept the move from full-time to part-time at the same rate that previously was at.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes. Anything else? There are some different grants out there. I mean, even just something that you have to look for, you know, so we'll try to help and whatever, you know? And OT is good for that. I mean, it might be the little ones, like Jason got the cemetery one. I mean, you know, just little things like that, but there are other grants that we can look at, so.
I've been going to a lot of webinars on those lately where there's a lot of federal money coming out.
Yes.
Obviously for infrastructure, so for roads and stuff like that, it'll supplement a lot of the stuff we usually go after with the OPWC, ODOT, and other usual annual grants that we go after. Doug was really big about just the issue two, just because it was simplified paperwork. It wasn't, like going after this ODOT grant, I, working at ODOT, I kind of understood where they're coming from, but at the same time, it was just tons of this and that, and then by the time you get here, you were dead and rode because you had to have an engineer's letter certificate.
Right.
Well, ODOT's not willing to come out and give that certificate, you know, to a township road. Well, then you have to call accounting, and then he's recommending, why don't we just do road surface? Well, I want to look at these culverts, wow, I don't have time for that.
Right.
So it's just like, duh!
You get stuck in them.
Yeah, so with just a bunch of dead end roads, and Doug helped a tremendous amount. He just, like you said, it's just, the issue twos are just simplified paperwork, so.
If you shoot an email to Paul Gruner, introduce yourself or go downtown or whatever, I have found, our relationship with him was kind of iffy for a while, and I have found him to be tremendously helpful, and if he couldn't get back with me right away, he's gotten me with somebody that has. And I think over the past couple of years, if not before, but our county guys have been phenomenally helpful.
And they have, I mean.
And I've had to call him and say, hey, can we look at? It may not be done quickly because he is a very busy man, like the intersections Clayton and Airhill and my nemesis, Old Dayton and Johnsville Brookville. He's still been looking into those, and they may not be on the forefront, back.
They're always there, yeah.
But yeah, if you call him or touch bases with him personally, he's been a lot more receptive.
I talked to Garrett Shoopshout several times. I mean, they're, they're all very helpful.
Yeah.
By the time you get to the, who you need to talk to, right? They're busy, everybody's busy, and it's, it's tough to get information need when you're begging for help, you know? But everything was good, we got applied for, so we'll get something.
Okay, cool. All right then, Chief Littleton.
Our November stats are posted to our website. We had another successful year with Shop With A Cop. This year, we were able to take three families instead of just two. That was eight children that participated on Saturday, December the eleventh. I'd like to thank everyone for their generous donations. It was due to the generous donations that we were absolutely able to do, the three families and eight children this year. Want to thank the Meyer and Inglewood for their donation as well, but also allowing us to come there and shop with everybody, and the staff was very friendly and very helpful to get everybody checked out in a timely manner. TJ Chomps over at Inglewood for hosting our lunch. I know it was probably a little overwhelming with twenty-five people or so there, but they did a great job getting us food and stuff served in a timely manner. The food and presents for Shop With A Cop are scheduled to be delivered for Wednesday, December the twenty-second. And I know that we're not even through Christmas yet, but another event that we'll be doing is the Easter egg hunt, so that's going to be around the corner here before we know it, so be on the lookout for additional information pertaining to the Easter egg hunt.
Are we going to stuff our own eggs this time?
Yes.
Thank you. I looked forward to that last year.
Last year.
I'll start.
This, this year, you know, it was touch and go because of COVID and not knowing the governor didn't release the state parks until the last minute, and by that time, stuffing that many eggs was not feasible, so that's why we ended up doing something here through.
I think it went fairly well.
It went pretty well and stuff. You know, we had a lot of traffic leaving Brookville headed to do Lebanon to do different hunts and stuff, so they would hit us on the way by, but that was the other thing, too, you know? The one day that we picked at the moment's notice was the day that two other jurisdictions were doing an Easter egg hunt, so that is what it is this year. Um, that is what it is this year. Hopefully we'll be back out at the state park and you know, pumping out the number like we used to, so.
Well, you know, I'm all about the egg stuffing, so I'll start now if you need me to.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you for including us in Shop With A Cop. That was great fun and those kids were adorable.
Never have too many hands when it comes to something like that, because just the logistics of getting something simple as shopping carts to and from the kid.
That's all I did.
Somewhere and that everything, it's a nice chaos to say the least.
And it was, and it was.
And then we had fighting the wind too.
That was crazy. Alrighty. Ms. Kayla, you're up.
Alright. Caleb and I have been working on cemetery deeds and the cemetery log updates and he's already reported on the uh working with Patrick on the website.
Yes, I miss you.
On the trash, our first quarter trash bills will be mailed out December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. And there's still two hundred and eighteen residences that have not paid their fourth quarter trash bills. In zoning, I am working with trustee Mears and Susan Carb
Graybill.
From Montgomery County Landbanks regarding some properties in Paramount. There were seven certified letters that I've sent out to the owners and the lien holders. And they were mailed out twelve ten twenty twenty-one. Once we received the green cards back, um we're getting closer to having the properties demolished. Um, I got a phone call today from one of the uh owners and they don't want anything to do with it. They're ready for it to be taken down. Uh, so um, you know, that just kinda opened the door for us, so hopefully we are gonna see this happen very soon. Um, since the last trustee meeting, there have been eight permits issued, one home addition, two pole barns, two pods, one single family resident, one shed and one in-ground pool. I reminded them it was December. I'm still handing out permits. Um, I will be setting up the next BZA hearing for February third of twenty twenty-two at seven PM. Um, and there'll be other information to follow on that. Also been working on a special project here at the township. Um, other than that, that's all I have.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I did have a question about the trash bills. Uh, over the last couple of months, you stated how many outstanding bills we have from this year, last year, the year before. Um, has there been any progress on moving forward with trying to get some level of closure with those grossly behind?
I think there's been a little bit. I mean, it seems like at the end of each quarter, you know, we still have around two hundred residents. I don't understand why, you know, they're not paying, but um usually in um August, then that's when we do the delinquent tax uh report. And there's usually around a hundred of those that sent to um the auditor's office or the treasurer's office for them to um to assess their taxes.
And do we know how many we currently have in a, in an assessed state?
Uh, I don't have the exact number and
I would just be curious how many we
Yeah, I do have, I have that information in my office.
Okay.
And I, when I first started doing the trash, um, I put into, into play a lot of procedures that has eliminated a lot of issues. For one thing, when the trash bills come in, the day that I get the trash bills, I log them. I have a log because I was getting calls from residents that says, oh, you know, you charged me a late fee. And, you know, but I didn't get the check until that day. I make sure it's logged that day.
Right.
And so a lot of that has stopped.
It's excellent. So, thank you.
Yes. Karen, did you get an email? Or even Missy and Jason from Gandian Associates about the Ohio Building and Site Revitalization Program?
I didn't get anything.
That's the email.
Was that the one you sent me?
From Andy, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I sent that to Karen because that's, that fit in with the other work that you've been doing, so.
That goes back to when I got the file from Kate and started the Paramount project. And so they finally contacted us with, hey, here's the thing again, and I wasn't sure who got the email or who didn't, because I had given them our email addresses.
I did get the one from Jason, yeah.
Okay, good. Um, and I'm just curious, cause I wasn't paying attention or following up, what was the decision on the swimming pool in the pole barn?
They did, the BZA did grant their variance. Um, because what the BZA tries to do is they take every individual case that comes through on an individual basis and look at uh the circumstances and um they presented their case and the BZA was in agreement, so they let them have it. The, the pool where they wanted, so it worked, it worked out.
Okay, I was just curious, cause that's, that's kind of a neat idea and I'm incredibly jealous. Okay. Good. Alright, moving on to our trustee reports. Um, following up on last month's trustee report. Um, I did not attend a couple of the meetings that I had planned to attend because of health slash medical reasons, but I have been on the phone with a couple of folks and um, set up my exit strategy. And Zach, I cannot legally give you my keys until after you're sworn in, so. Yeah, well, after January, when, yeah. So I was gonna do that tonight and walk away and be like, hey, but um you will get those keys in the meantime. So mostly everything I have done this month has just been phone calls. Um, I discovered I've got a drawer full of random papers and files that are not connected or that should be papers in the files, but they're not, so I'm organizing that more. And I will get that to you on our um work slash special meeting the third Thursday or third Tuesday. Are we doing a work session or is it just gonna be that special meeting?
I think we have to see what all we have to come up with.
Still working through that.
Okay, I'll make sure everything gets dropped off and actually makes sense at that point in time. And y'all had to know, I'm not gonna go out without a fairy well. So here it is. Um, and I'm gonna read it and if I
This is not your last.
This is my last official meeting as president of the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
Because the next official meeting, Zach will be in the seat as a trustee. I know we have the restructuring and all that stuff, but you want me to wait and read it?
It's up to you. You go right in.
I mean, I know we've last public official
Okay, go ahead.
Board of Trustees meeting.
Let it rip.
Anyway, no, basically, uh, you know, I just wanted to say thank you for the two years that I got to fill the position. Um, I, I learned the township government is very different than any other government experience whatsoever, cause we sit here and we get to vote on whether or not we agree with decisions or obligations to affect our township. But we're really under the auspices of the OTA and the state and the county. And in some circumstances, even under a federal level. And we have to do things a certain way and report to the people above us, so I've had the opportunity to form the nice bonds with Heidi Fott and the other administrative members of the OTA. And, you know, found that there are a lot of, a lot of things that we do up here that all we're doing is managing the decisions that are already made above our heads. Um, our township was absent for a lot of committees. And I'm very honored that I got to be an active part with the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. And not only did I get to participate with their disaster recovery and impacted jurisdictions committee, but I was honored be a speaker on behalf of our township, both as a trustee and a survivor at their closing banquet. And I hope that our township will continue to forge the relationship and work with Stacy Schweickert on all of, and all the phenomenal people on all of their projects, um, including the retreat that is still happening. And follow up with the efforts of Catholic Social Services and the Brethren Disaster Ministries and any crises that we may have or need, because they were tremendous to our township after the tornado recovery. Um, I know and Sue Missy is still going to continue to work with Vic and the Wolf Creek Waterway cleanup. And whatever ends up happening with that. And I'm still gonna follow along, cause I'm curious to see what happens with the wetland projects. Um, I am very excited about the ladies um and Ms. Graybill and everybody working at state and county level and everything that's happening with Karen and Missy in the struggles and the long-term fights. And I'm very excited to say that those buildings in Paramount will come down. We will clean up Paramount. We will clean up here on, Paramount will be clean. Um, our township's done a lot of growing the and with the help of OTARMA and the KLA Risk Management Team, we eliminated a significant number of financial penalties that kept our township in the red. Some of the changes that happened weren't planned or desired, but they were necessary and they brought our township up to code. And after many long years, we're very close to being near perfect. Many and most of the changes that were made were made by a lot of other people than the three of us seated trustees. But it's a simple fact that the biggest change is for the first time in a long time, those who felt that they were not heard in the past have been heard. People's voices were heard, those who felt shut out were acknowledged. The concerns voiced by so many of our predecessors in our administration have been and are still being addressed. And a lot of trees got trimmed. So when I thought of running for trustee in two thousand and twelve, I decided against it because so many people thought our township was a mess or we're close to bankruptcy or don't do this, don't do that. And they discouraged me from being part of a sinking ship. But after Chief Adams and most of his staff resigned altogether, I got curious. And I thought, well, maybe that's the end of our local policing and expected MCSO to be in here by now. Then after the tornado in twenty nineteen, I saw hope. I saw strength. I saw promise. I saw more people coming together than I even knew our township had. I saw our police department just totally take an emergency scene and keep chaos from being uncontrollable. And at that point in time, it was still a fairly new department. Um, when the chief and his wife are running the scene, you know you're in small town America. So I agreed to try to fill this vacant seat to see what was happening and coming in. I saw our police department grow exponentially. I saw our citizens and community members work together with each other to build support. And regardless of political beliefs, I saw strength and bonds forming that had been absent for a long time. So in two years, I've, I've seen us come a really long way. And I'm honored and proud that I've been a part of that. So Karen, Missy, Jason and Charity, this is the crying part. You guys have been great. I'm not crying, cause I'm leaving, because I need to take care of me. I'm crying, cause I'm proud. Cause I got to be a part of this. And Zach, when you feel like you need to bang your head on a wall, you will. I'll provide that wall, cause I get it. You will. And if you need to scream or vent or cuss or whatever, I won't be a trustee, so I'm always gonna have a listening ear. Thank you. The rest of the meetings are just boring paperwork, so. Okay, um, also, I think that was it on my trustee report. So follow it out and Jason.
Do my best. Uh, last month, we've uh continued to update the township social media and digitizing documentation. General IT maintenance and upkeep of the township systems. And I've been working with Oasis for planning the domain and email migration to the new hosting provider, which should happen in the next week or two. So we'll be done with Host Papa hopefully by the end of the year and that'll get us back about, I don't know, five months, I believe of uh services that we would have otherwise paid for.
How often is he updating the page?
Whenever we send him some.
Okay, so.
Charity sends him stuff, I send him stuff, Karen's been sending him stuff. Basically, anytime that there's something to update, it usually gets updated relatively quickly.
Okay. I don't think I have his contact info, but starting relatively sooner next month, as I take pictures. Um, I'm not gonna be an admin on Facebook anymore, so I will send them say to Karen or yeah, I guess, though, is that the easiest to send them to Karen?
It is. We're working out a way of, of also sending stuff uh via shares with uh Oasis.
Do we?
We have one set up. We haven't started to use it, cause I wanted to make sure that I did the branding across the different platforms at the same time, so it was all the same.
Okay.
Um, we mentioned that once or twice, I think, on Facebook, but it's, I don't think anything's ever been submitted or tagged to it, so.
Okay.
So we could do that as well and they can roll that into part of the rotation on the website.
Okay, cause I'm a scrapbooker. I still take pictures of everything.
The maintenance garage, uh, the, the new IT hardware has been ordered. Some of it's here. I'll be installing some of the components this weekend. Uh, other components will be installed as they arrive. For the roads and cemeteries, I've continued weekly driving spec roads, cemeteries and nuisance properties. And for meetings this month, I've, I attended the second annual Ohio Grant Summit on December seventh. And I attended uh the OPWC District Four meeting as a sitting member. So this was my first year actually going through uh scoring and evaluating the submissions from every municipality in Montgomery County. And I will say honestly that I have a much better idea of the questions asked Kramer and Kramer when they say, here's your stuff, what do you think? Um, it, it's
It's a lot.
It, it's, it's a lot and the scoring criteria is, is uh very interesting, but very specific. And that is all I have for this month.
Okay. So this month I got the opportunity to sort of launch uh tour area, area of vets at Rob's Restaurant. I'd like to thank Rob's, MVCTC Criminal Justice Students, Brookville Police and the City of Brookville. Two of our officers um were present at the cer- at the ceremony and the luncheon. Uh, helped with shop with a cop, very touching to see these kids. My thanks goes to Chief Littleton and our officers and again the MVCTC Criminal Justice. If you've never been on this, it breaks your heart when you see a kid pick up a bottle, let's try. That's what they want, let's try. Sorry, that was
Yeah.
Oh, attended a meeting with Ms. Kayla and Ms. Grill, Sergeant Ten, Tina Way, Myra and Chief Littleton. Received phone calls from residents with uh questions and concerns. Have spent time with Mr. Hoops and Mr. Stack going eye, over items that will need to be addressed at the building. Have worked with Ms. Kayla and the land bank regarding property in Paramount. Been in contact with a law lawyer regarding a property that we, that we think is abandoned. The property is a, is in a trust and the resident has passed away. And there are several valuations, trying to find out who has ownership. And uh I did have a meeting with Mr. Hoops, Mr. Stack and Ms. Kayla regarding the recording keeping of the cemetery books. Looking to see how we can get all the records up. Looking to see how we can get all the records updated, which I know you talked with Oasis. Mr. Steck comes with quite a bit of experience in operating a cemetery and has some very good suggestions. I was very impressed with the genealogy and things like that.
Tons of knowledge.
Tons. I mean, I, that is something I would never have thought of and I was very impressed.
Yeah, that's, it's a, a big help.
Yes.
You can ask him, bounce things off of him.
And the one thing that I will ask is, like I said, I, I did, I spent. A couple hours down at the garage, which I had been down there numerous times, but I, I talked with Mr. Hoops and Mr. Sick. I invite you both to go down. And if there is a fire, I could not get out. I could not open this door.
The back door or the front?
The front. Yeah, there are so many issues over there.
So grab a hold of the door, see if you can open it. Old shake, it looks like a little mouse grabbing a hold of it. Didn't open it.
Caleb, you know me, if I wanted out, I could out. I could not open the door.
You can run the other way.
Yeah, there's three heating systems in there. There's oil, gas and electric. This is, this is not right. The draining, the drain things aren't working, uh, black mold. These are things we've got to look at. We have got to get these issues taken care of. So I invite both of you down to, to spend some time and just look and see, because I was amazed.
There was black mold that was removed out of our record stories and, and evidence room.
Yes.
So.
And I informed him and Mr. Steck, do not touch it because it's one of those, it's, I don't know, what is that insulation that?
Insulation, but it's been wet for.
How many?
How long it's been wet, but. It's supposed to. Start to roll down, so it's like.
Yeah.
Something, yeah.
Yeah, it was, that was not a fun day that day, especially when they tried to lock me in the building and couldn't let me out.
Randy pulled the same thing on me with the door.
Yeah. That's all I have.
He had talked about the um. The family that, you know, were there picking up, you know, toothbrush, toothpaste and Listerine. We're working with some aerial, area dentists. And I'm also trying to get ahold of somebody down at Procter and Gamble. To see about getting stuff donated and see how long I can get that stuff donated for uh, the family, so.
I had, I had, I had to beg this young man to please take toys. I mean, he, he wanted mechanical pencils and Listerine and toothbrushes and deodorant and. I said, no, that's not the way it works. So we got coats, we got boots, we got underwear. So, yeah.
But this goes to show you what people can take for granted on a daily basis. And that other families here in our own community.
Yes.
Don't have.
No.
So.
I mean, your kids asking for Listerine for Christmas?
I wish. Russians are a chore in our house, so.
But yes, it was, it was, I mean, if no, if you haven't done it, you need to do it. It was very, I mean, it just melts your heart. It just, you just want to take them home, so.
Is that something that can be, you know, where we could advertise over the, our um.
On the community to donate.
Patients here. That way then, they can be given out.
We, we'd have to look into actually setting up a.
We had talked about a free store or something like that.
Yeah, but then you get in this, there's several people running it and volunteers and things like that. I think, I know what you're saying.
It's, it's something that requires more thought, but I think there is a need in the community and it would be who has to.
And we do have like fish in Brookville and things like that, so we do, there are places, but like I said.
And I think with God's grace, maybe coming back to somewhere near the township. A mobile pantry is coming back somewhere either in or near the township. So we can put together, I can get you a list of resources from. Different social service people I know. And just to have as well.
Absolutely.
That's all I got. Thank you for crying, sorry. Okay, uh, any old business? Not this business? Okay, um, new business, i- it's not necessarily township business, but just to throw this out there. There are several groups in the community, including Music's Automotive, Troop Impact Forty Seven. The New Lebanon United Methodist Church, several other churches. That are gathering things for people in Kentucky. We've been there. And what we had is a drop of water compared to what they're seeing. I, I've got some friends on Ohio Task Force One and I've been following their photos and their live shots and their pictures. And. It's unbelievable the amount of devastation. And the amount of loss of life, it's heart wrenching. So anybody that can step up from our community to help their community, I strongly encourage that. Because like I said, we've been there, but nothing compared to what they're seeing. So if you guys remember how we felt. Multiply that and then some. Not much, nothing else on new business? Anything else? I do want to say, it just as I'm thinking. As heartbreaking as it was when these kids wanted toothbrushes and Listerines. If y'all could have seen their faces when they found out that they could buy bicycles.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. It was, it was just my heart. Uh, do any visitors have anything this evening?
Yes, Mr. Lewis said he'd like to speak.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Warble?
Brad Warble, uh, lived on the Crawford, Tom's Run Road. Do we have any update on the unlocated monies from the. Uh, investigation? Any updates on that stuff?
Detective Waymire will defer to you on that.
We still have an ongoing investigation.
Yeah, I was at grand jury today.
Okay. And then the twenty-three thousand dollars that was under the past administrations. Not allocating, I guess, for retirement fund, is that correct?
Well, what they did was they were withholding for social security instead of for OPERS. And the only ones that have an option between social security and OPERS is a newly elected official.
Okay.
Um, the three individuals that were involved were not elected positions. Um, so they have no option. They have to pay into OPERS by OPERS guidelines.
And the fiscal officers bonded, Rhonda, Rhonda Bankman would have been bonded.
Um, I'm working with the bond uh, company that did her bond. I can't submit anything to them for a claim. Until I have all of the numbers to submit.
But there's a possibility that could be paid out of her bond.
That's correct. Uh, how the process works is I have to submit to them. They will reach out to her for her response to the claim and then they'll make a determination whether the claim's payable or not.
Okay, thank you. It's all happening.
There is a possibility that the township will have to pay it and then be, be reimbursed.
No, the township does have to pay it and then be reimbursed because a lot of them are coming due now, like. I, with the timing of it, some of it, some of them don't have to be paid until into twenty twenty-two, but it's like January third, it has to be paid. And the longer it goes before we pay it, the more the penalties are that go with it.
So we will have to put out money towards that. Hopefully. Okay, anybody else? At this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
You everybody, have a safe and merry Christmas.